Two-minute recess? I'm not listening. I don't care how it is. You called me a liar already, goodnight, you're here for me. I'm not listening to you. Listen, you asked this question fourteen times in the past week, and you've got the answer. Go ahead. Go ahead lady. Just leave. Oh, thank you very much. How many times have you talked to administration to get the answer? I'm gonna give you the answer you want. You're accusing me of telling my daughter. You, you accuse me of telling my daughter I can read between the lines. Everything that you put on Facebook. You're telling her, you just did it right here. And nobody knows what you're talking about. Okay. I'm gonna go to something here. You told me to tell her to shut up a year ago.
Point of order, this is, this is, this is embarrassing as an elected official.
You're right.
I'm going to move to adjourn and excuse myself from this bullshit.
I'm not receiving that. I want to tell these people very strongly. I'm not arguing. Because you're, what you do is okay, but she can't make a sign. I didn't say she didn't do anything. I'm not arguing. What she did was give you the finger, whatever she did. But you can interrupt anybody you want, sir. It's okay. You know, and I don't want to get all... But I'm gonna talk to the press thing if nobody wants to hear it. The adjournment, the happenstance adjournment. We have your, you can spear your bullshit onto them. We have, we have four of us here. So we need... Okay. People, okay, I just want to welcome... Stand, who's gonna start now? Why? Because of that. It's over. We got a lady. I just want to say, welcome. See what you're in for? Know what you're in for? The press, I'm gonna talk to you about this issue. He can say everything he wants to, and so can every other council member, but the mayor can't. And that's pretty darn bad, if you ask me. So I'll come right over there and get all here at the same time. Is that okay? And you can put a camera...
It definitely felt like election season at the West New York Board of Commissioners meeting on Wednesday night, when Commissioner Count Lyley, who was challenging Mayor Felix Wilkamp at the May 12 municipal election, had to deal with a lot of criticism from the crowd. However, he is West New York committed to get, we're not shy, and fire right back.
Mr. Lyley, I got some questions for you. Uh, do you live in West York? Do you live here?
Like, it's not town business, I'm not gonna...
Okay. Well, it is town business, 'cause you're, you're, you're running to become mayor, and you say you live in West York, but then your wife is a committee woman in North Bergen. Do you guys live separate? You live together. Your kids, where do they go to school? In West York or North Bergen? This is, this is, this is town business, man, 'cause the town cares about that the guy who wants to run for mayor doesn't live in this town. People need to know that. No!
But diehard Westy.
No, you don't... I would never say that. This is, you know, you know, you know, you know, the first thing you do, the first thing you did as a congressman, you were here talking to everybody. I mean, it's your community, it's North Bergen, all right, please. And so, there's, there's an issue there. There is an legality there. Your wife cannot be a committee woman in North Bergen, 'cause then, you're saying you live there.
My wife is a beautiful person.
And that's nothing to look at, beautiful, that's hard, you first of all. This is nothing, first of all.
She does nothing for the town of West New York.
If she had a committee woman in North Bergen...
She's a big man by my side.
Do you know what you're in this? Do you know you're in a politics custom made from... Everybody still...
Talk about the ten million dollars deficit.
Let's talk about any of this exactly.
It's talking about the level of poverty that this administration has caused for West...
So why would you do this?
Million dollars.
Why would you do this?
Anybody can make it better than with this administration.
Anybody, no, I see you understand. You can't call a westy...
Motion, motion, two visas.
To you, westy, to you, so to you, westy, to you, listen. Listen, to you, westy, they're so stupid, they're so stupid, they can't even use a screen. I'm done.
You wrote a letter to the Board of Commissioners, to the Board of Education, excuse me, alleging that that man Ricky Solares was violating election law. And you know what, Count, it would be okay with me if I felt for one second you believed it. I know that you know that that man has more integrity, more decency, more honor than you will ever have. How dare we sit up here and make you the god that you are not? Why don't we talk about the other deeds you've done? Why don't we talk about the fact that you threatened someone in City Hall, a woman, that you would rip her neck off and defecate down her neck? Why don't we talk about that? That's a fact. No, I'm not a sick rooster, sir. I speak the truth. You don't have to say anything about it.
Very disturbing.
Excuse me, you didn't interrupt him, the way you're gonna interrupt me, sir. I'm entitled to my opinion, and you know that is true. Sir, you lied. You know you lied. You're an angry bitter man, and you're a bully. The difference is, you can't bully me.
I'm not angry, you are.
If we're gonna tell the truth, let's tell the truth. The first time you and I talked about Ricky, remember? When you said to me, oh wait, you know, uh, he's been a little too rough on my people. You gotta pull him back. When I become commissioner, mayor, he's out. That's who you are. You're a bully. No, 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 I didn't wanna do that. I was...
Wait, wait, you're doing it again?
He's a good man. Listen, he's okay. I'm not saying he's a bad guy.
No, you went to the right office. He wasn't doing the wrong thing.
You know the wrong thing. You know he wasn't doing the wrong thing. You know it, I know it, and every person in the...
I wanted to show you the grace and mercy I had on this man. Three people, I said, I'm following. I go to the state of New Jersey and report him, I wouldn't allow it.
We welcome it, sir. As a matter of fact, I challenge you to do it.
Okay, well, you can...
For the record, I challenge you to do it. Have you not learned a lesson with Ricky? We should not cast stones before we live in a glass house, not being... When I headed up the campaign for Chucky and the mayor, I made sure we never disrespected anyone, that we never made it personal. We wanted to intimidate people in the street. Never did that. Excuse me, you don't stand fifty people across the room and intimidate all the people out with us. Absolutely, that's right. Scaring is not intimidation, sir. The only one that tried to intimidate me was you. Remember when you came over that day? At the Board of Education meeting? For the record, sir, you were no saint.
That's past, we wanna move forward.
Do me a favor, please. Just remember this. I was out. My friend Chuckie is my witness, my friend Hector is my witness, I was out. I am disgusted by what's going on in our town more than anybody here. I actually live here. I've been here since ninety-seven. I choose to live here. I don't need to live here, and yet I stay. I care. You know what brought me out? When I see this kind of disgusting thing. You guys want a political war? You got one. Welcome to the game. Join the list. Join the line.
And I've seen Commissioner White, the person who spent over twenty-five thousand dollars of his money, uh, and sometimes we tell him, Count, stop spending the money, you need it for campaign, you need it for this n***a. No, no, I'd rather spend the six hundred dollars on the kids, nine hundred on the kid than spend on that. If I lose, uh, at least I go out happy and I do what I have to do. And I've seen him cry for the people, so I can't just sit here and sit and go home and think that, uh, people, and just let the, the public think that that's the way it is. Anybody who knows him knows that that's not the truth. I was in Count's house the other night, I know he lives there. Some of that bitch is just so ridiculous. I, I caution the public to go into this campaign in a ridiculous route, uh, saying things that are not true, just flying off the cuff. The facts are the facts. I think there's enough facts one way or the other for people to agree on whatever they wanna do.
John Hines with Hudson County Bureau, P.I. of the community.
All right, it's seven thirty, uh, we're all ready tomorrow. Uh, the court will have the roll call. Is ready for roll call? Okay. Uh, we'll have, uh, I'm actually being approved of the agenda. Yeah, I'm not a lawyer, but I certainly can, I, I can certainly make a resolution to have someone removed from office that, that is not an elected official. And then, then the council has to vote up.
You don't send out letters from this city without our approval.
Oh, yes, I do.
Well, I make a motion. I'll make a motion at any letter sent out.
No, you can't, you can't make a motion on top of the motion that's already out.
Okay, what's your motion?
My motion is that these letters be approved.
Okay, second.
Second. You second? Hold it in favor, say aye. Aye. Bill with the poll?
No.
Well, you can't say no.
Yes, I can.
No, you can't, it's a conflict of interest.
Oh, really? My husband doesn't hate...
It's conflict of interest.
Well, then you better look up Congress.
Yes, I have it right here.
I voted no, my vote is no.
I have it right here.
I like the way this guy thinks.
No, it isn't, it was hard. Oh, John.
We need to get out of here in a minute. The lawyer told you not to.
No, he didn't say that. No, and I said I would take another advisory, he said okay. Yes, that is.
Larry, it's not on the agenda, it was not approved. You put on the agenda, yeah, but stop what you're doing.
It's done. Stick it to the agenda like a mayor is supposed to.
And I'll know, knock it off. I, I can bring up what I want to. I, I helped the mayor do this, and I can bring up what I need to bring up.
You need to stick to the agenda, then just like...
Stick to the agenda.
No, I don't think I have more power. But I have a, I said subject to the council approval. And you, and because you can't vote, now you're trying, you're trying to push this thing over railroad of a way. That's what you're trying to do.
You were trying to railroad...
I have one who sent out letters from the city on my own without council approval.
Well, you should pay him. Yeah, I, I had a letter from Mr. Raff, and you tried to pay him.
I vote for orders of the day, Larry, do you know what that means? Orders of the day, you need to get back to the agenda. But I want to second my motion for orders of the day. That has been sent.
All right, you're all right, I'm gonna be put out right here.
Yeah? We'll wait for you, we'll give you ten minutes to hold it down.
I like this, you hear?
What's he, what does he say he has?
Yeah.
What's he saying he has?
Why not wait for some parade thing?
You can keep going, I'm gonna go get the letter. And I'm getting around for a minute, 'cause you can find food shop.
Are you going to Larry's house?
Yeah, there's my wife.
Move on, I think you should be out here.
That, that's our order, shit damn right, though. So let's get back to the agenda.
No, you said to go home.
Yeah, let's get back to the agenda.
No, and you said to go for it, and I'm, I'm here running the beat.
Well, then run it then.
Okay, I'll just tell you right here. Our offices are incompatible. It says generally persons are incompatible, one or more of the thoughts, accusations exist. And I have several of these. Where you hire or appoint the other. Performance functions that are inconsistent with the other. Make contact with the other.
It's not on the agenda, you, you talk to her, I want...
Do you need to get back to the agenda, I'm making two, you know, suggest we all...
Not on the agenda, my reason...
I wanna get back to the agenda in city business.
No, see, you wanna do what you wanna do. The thing is, we're gonna move you back from the town.
Are you agenda or no?
I'm sticking to the agenda.
Why you not?
Yes, I am.
Okay, no, no.
My motion to adjourn, just wait. It's motion to adjourn for...
No, no, you can't.
My motion to adjourn, don't get set again.
I would not accept, I would not accept your motion to adjourn because, because we have not paid the bill.
It's not on the agenda, they're not talking to the lawyer.
You need to understand, no...
Higher than four.
Why are you saying higher than four? You people...
Yeah, you forget who you are. You are component of the people of the town.
The black people. You're injustice for yourself.
Right.
I figured that when you mail out these letters.
This hell walking out. And once you walk out of my city, you don't belong here. You don't wanna be a, a leader of our city? Get the hell out. We're trying to...
My officer, I, I vote that that woman gets...
No, now wait, wait.
She cannot control herself.
Matt, who is running this meeting?
My one, Larry.
I am.
Look at it, no, no.
I am. Now, it's in our hands, and... What are you, is county vote?
The residents would like to see you always.
Start a petition, that's how it works.
We have, start a petition. We have.
Good, I'm glad.
We're dangerous to make a city, a big city.
Okay. Are you gonna stay or leave?
I'm leaving. You got it right, you can write, it's right, you can lead your cities. And you're pulling this stuff and getting it going.
No, there's nothing going, no, they can't.
But it's a story.
No, that has nothing to do with over...
Oh, yes, it does.
No, it does not.
Yes, it does.
Because this is something that you must put in the city too. So you tell me what you got. I got a whole book that is this, what, the conflict of interest.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How are we ever going to get justice paid and the consequences of our city? Come through with it, we continue to have officials walk out of this meeting with their own...
I don't know, but I know for a fact that Mr. Bill Kretz, before he was terminated, he stated that you cannot make a meeting without paying the bill.
Yes.
And I have a letter that I have, from which to go with it.
Where is that?
Uh, I don't have it with me, but I have it. That's right. So it doesn't matter, I mean, I can't carry the whole office with me.
That's the way we serve our country. That's right, it's time you turn around and throw in a lawsuit ass. And then you went over the city money's going through.
Who's throwing a lawsuit at? Nobody's throwing a lawsuit at.
Yeah, all this money is going to pay lawyers. That we're yelling about that...
No, that is not true. Geez, man. You're paying money out.
I don't want paying money out. So is the city.
Yes, you are.
The city and rural parks, plus what you've run us through.
No, no, I didn't, no, I ain't gonna say it all. I have not heard anything while you work for him.
Oh, hello. I have a better word than that. I'm sure glad our legislature in the United States and that just don't get up and walk out without fixing things.
Right.
But how do you fix things if you're...
Sit down and take your turn. Speak after us. No, 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 it's, sit down and behave yourself and act like a council member. You want me to behave myself? Yes, how about you? And how about the other? I'm doing the right, I'm doing, I'm dealing with the council. You come in there and say I'm a... I don't like this, I don't like that.
Hard, put that, put that camera down.
Sorry, Scott.
Put the camera down.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
Oh, you can.
Put that camera down.
All right, I just want you guys to move on. Darren, after the boss, I think we're in this town.
Well, that's true. Yeah, try again. Isn't that rude?
Wipe clean, and then we get the next one. Including the second from there. Everybody goes down to you and get the answer. That's not fair. I seen your yard, it looks hard. When your husband's working. I seen, I seen him down there for it. I don't want to hide from you. They take their idea from you. That's what happened in New York. They're all walked out. You ain't talking about it.
Come on. You want to go over there? You...
Who are you, what are you?
Rob from the messenger.
Rob from the messenger. You get a... This isn't funny.
I was gonna say it's Monday, you'll get a kick out of it.
We also heard on other parts of this, this particular position, that it was created for, uh, uh, community service, uh, community outreach, uh, the, the, uh, community policing efforts that Mr. Oregon has, has so graciously brought to our city. Uh, but the fire marshal was moved to the police department, and he is primarily community outreach. And so there was no need to have community outreach in the fire department when the fire marshal is primarily that person. I do know a little bit about fire. And again, again, you know, as, as, as we sit here, uh, we have not received one shred, one document, one report, one thing from our city manager concerning the EEOC complaint that Mr. Zach will file. We have nothing. I have received nothing. And I don't understand why. And then, you know, you have these newspaper reports circulating.
I placed that in an envelope in your box, you should have a copy of that.
That, that, I checked my system.
It was when it was filed several weeks ago, sir.
Now, I, I have, I have not yet received your response, the city's response. We don't even know what we said to them. We don't even know what we said to EEOC. We don't even, we don't, how can we, how can we investigate or inquire? And we don't know anything.
We're getting off the... We're gonna repeal this ordinance or not?
Well, let me, well, let me, let me help you here, Ellis.
I have something to say to you.
Let, let me help you here, Ellis.
I have something to say to you.
This is, this is an ordinance to repeal. This is an ordinance to repeal the Public Safety Director's position. The Public Safety Director's position was created in parts to use a buffer system.
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me, this is a, this is a city council...
Hey, this whole thing, this, this whole thing is out of hand.
Thank you, excuse me.
This whole thing is out of hand.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me.
We're not, we're not paying him for this, uh, uh, Mr. Austin. We're not paying him for this. We're paying awesome and awesome for this.
I'm, I'm calling for the council to only speak at this time. I'm asking for the council. And this is a discussion among the council. And everyone on this council have the right to be heard as to the way that they feel. Everyone has to... Excuse me, this is a city council meeting, you do not have that right. But you don't have the right. We can discuss this, but you don't have that right. Thank you, thank you. Then you will, thank you.
All good, all good.
Thank you. Okay, um... There, you don't have a quorum, you can have a meeting. And, and I can continue discussing. I can still continue discussing. So, yes, ma'am, I can, you can, you can walk out, but I can still discuss. I can still discuss, thank you very much. Now, okay, I'm gonna discuss, and, uh, we can continue discussing, but no action will be taken on anything as a quorum has, um, ceased to exist. We can't consider, we can't continue our discussion.
I'll clarify one other thing, Mr. Mayor. Um, that doing the business of this, um, council in, in front of it, and Ms. Nolte-Mayer, I'm sensitive to your, uh, if Ms. Nolte-Mayer's here.
She left some time ago.
Maybe she'll... Perhaps she's, perhaps she's watching, um, on television. Uh, in, just in case, I wanted to let you know that it is true that there was a subcommittee that was scheduled, and, uh, it was canceled due to, uh, personal issues from one of the council members that's on it. But I asked for a briefing myself, being on this, okay, to get a background on this, this issue, so I have an understanding going in. So, um, this is kind of a, a, a bigger hearing than, than...
I know, but let's be honest. Cam Nolte-Mayer was a, a council member for the city of San Fernando. She was a total wreck down there with a...
Mr. Ferry, I don't, Mr. Ferry, Mr. Ferry.
They voted against her. She comes here, she wants to destroy the city, and she just throws out little bombs or grenades, and then she leaves without an answer. So the community has to know that Cam Nolte-Mayer has no credibility in San Fernando, and now she wants to poison our community.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
So everyone has to understand, Cam Nolte-Mayer is poison.
That demand's finished, nobody interrupted you.
Uh, but...
You have to say... Then go ahead, it's your turn.
No one knows she was a councilwoman in San Fernando where she destroyed the city.
Mr. Mayor.
After she moved up here and wants to...
Point of order.
We have to shut her down. Why? She's poison and toxic.
A point of order.
You put her as the god and the savior for the city. No, that's wrong.
A point of order, sir.
Cam Nolte-Mayer is a toxic waste who goes city to city.
A point of order, sir.
No, let him finish. Nobody interrupted you.
As a savior, she's not.
Mr. Attorney.
And she is poison, and they should not listen to her.
Your city attorney, you do not have the ability to ask for point of order?
San Fernando city councilwoman, Cam Nolte-Mayer. And you're gonna see that I'm being honest, and he puts her out there as the savior. She's not, she's poison. Okay, go on. You don't even listen so much before I explode and say you're full of it.
Okay, Ken, Ben, it's your turn.
Thank you for the floor, Mr. Mayor. I was...
Other people are entitled to the floor.
Yes, sir, I do understand that, but the reason I was asking for point of order, sir, is that we have rules that we are supposed to abide by here on, on the dais. And those rules are about common respect to the citizens that come before us. And I don't need to actually get it out and read it word for word, I don't think. But my reason for having point of order was to remind the council that we are not supposed to denigrate, argue with, and put down the citizens that come here, no matter how badly we disagree with them. And although I disagree with many of the things...
I can't put up with her lies and false stories over and over again and be silent. She can tell me to sit here and abide by your rules, but you use the rules as a weapon against us, and I won't do it any longer.
Mr. Mayor. Do, do I have the floor?
I don't know. What do you want me to do? Can't you hop by the stack and swivel? Call the question. We have a motion, we have a second, call the question.
Yes, wrap up your comments and let's move on.
No, call the question.
My...
Questions, man.
I, I, I have, I have the floor. I have the floor to finish my comments, sir.
Take, make your comments briefly, let's wrap it up and move on to the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the reason that I wanted to bring it as a point of order, and the reason that we have a, that is supposed to go in a smooth fashion like that, is so that we can do this with decorum, is so that we can do this with decorum, so that we can do it in a calm, collected way. And I want to. And I would like to make it clear that we should be gentlemen and ladies when we are speaking back to one another.
When are you gonna learn to be a gentleman?
Let's move on.
We called the question, let's vote.
I have no problem with mine.
We have an appointment with Mr. Jeff, we're here to do the town's business. When we conclude that business.
You're supposed to know, like, you're more.
Just prior to the meeting, you had no problems, this won't play for you either, no problem. Mr. Callahan, she's not our only appointment, please. Enough, enough screwing around with the floor, enough. It's at the beginning of the meeting, it was voted on by this group, enough. This is, this is BS, that's all of it. Now get to business so we can deal with the floor. Let's see how long this time to Jill is, is a gent, shit. Mr. Callahan. One, one last point, Joe. Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, like, I'm in here, I'm pressing the other gentleman here, I never got a lot of her phone call, yet Jim comes in and he bumps out over the floor because he said the president? Where does that come from?
He's conducting town business.
So she can't. Town business, it has to do with people in this room, it's not, this is town business. This is all town, these people are town business.
I understand that, this is financial business, it has to be taken care of.
Okay, now let me ask you, let's not do it again, Nancy, you're playing with something there. This is political, this is BS. I'm gonna ask you, please. Mr. Jeff. I love Mr. Jeff.
Kenwell, 111 Lockwood. Uh, in light of a report that I read in the Kingston Reporter, and Ms. Mumford's statement tonight, through you, Mr. Chip, I would like to ask Mr. Gleason, Mr. Gleason, do you now still have, on October 23rd, a residence in the town of Kingston? All these people here wanna know, all the people watching wanna know. I wanna know, I supported you. And if you do not have a residency here, then you shouldn't be sitting in that chair, voting on my behalf. Because I supported you, you should have, evidently the, the reporter called and asked you, and you had your opportunity after, after Ms. Mumford's statement to rebut her allegations. So through, through the chair, I ask you to just squash the rumor or confirm it. So. I don't even know town council business.
He expects your call, so, right?
One second, in a minute, I promise you can. Well, we look for talk and I'm wanting you to just, you're not, are you not? It's just a question, I, I.
With all due respect, I'm not gonna come up here and say, talk to town council, unless I'm talking to town council.
That was, that was not right.
I don't think you would.
Choosing her, that was not right, choosing her, upsetting someone that was said that it's supposed to be.
Have you been recognized?
That was not correct, you choose. I don't need to be recognized by you, 'cause I don't recognize you.
Okay, got it.
Okay. You can do it again.
Thank you for the last time. Uh, two things occurred here tonight that drew my interest, and they both involved town council. Uh, the first one is, uh, I believe, just a short time ago, Joe, that you indicated that, um, you had gotten an opinion of council with regard to the votes that Mr. Gleason is involved in, did I hear you correctly?
Yes, you did, sir.
Obviously.
I didn't mean to give it, I said it.
You said it. That's even better. Do you, uh, did you get this as a verbal or in a written format?
Oh, verbal, yes.
Okay, I would suggest that, and who am I but to suggest?
No, that's a good suggestion, I understand.
That you get these things in writing?
This is a review by Labor Council, and I'll just comment on some of the things he actually read, what he says here. I don't see any practical way to power up the police or supervise the unit. There isn't really a practical way to power up the police, private, and the private with other units. So for that reason, I'm afraid we have to leave it the way it is. What are your best, can you hear the place, uh, we cannot hear you over here. Can you hear, would you like to hear us? Okay, tell you what. Could you repeat the microphone, is that, could you repeat it?
I'm not the only one, we can.
I give their back, carry it out, carry it out.
I sympathize, I sympathize, I don't get along with myself. One second, if it happens to be repeat, what he said, and a lot of it. Which private didn't you hear, that's what I want. Anywhere else?
What about the residents? What about the residents' choice? You're the councilor for the residents' choice.
We're in discussion, and here you go.
And they're right, that's right.
I have no idea you.
You're having that, residents are here for a reading.
We heard from.
And you're not giving them.
We heard, excuse me, discussion.
Are you thoughtful?
We heard from the residents, when they voted for the candidate, it was not. Thank you.
Situation was different then. All right, you're a little high in this guy, but, and you're here because of us, and it can be taken out because of us.
That's right.
So it's time the residents to hear, that want this change, not just you or advice of council.
I got a motion, I got a second.
I know what you got to do.
We're in discussion, I really need you to give me a little more, I don't need this, you're leaving me.
You don't have the reason to, I'm not playing games, you guys up.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. Yes.
My, my suggestion is only to make, if you wanna use the word fair, the process fair. I think it's, it's our choice, and we should be the first to admit.
That's a good opinion, doesn't have to be mine.
Of course.
Well, I think that, I think that this column sent to recruitment services, who did a great job in hiring Jill Myers for the town chat, they have professional recruiters, this is what they do, they come to the town, they evaluate, they look, look over what the job is, they interview everybody, they find out what you're looking for, they, they draft up a, a profile, they, they really do their homework, they do all the screening, and they bring a minimum of three candidates forward for consideration. Yes, there's a fee of $14,000, this is what they do, they're professional, this is what they do.
It's ridiculous, spend that money. And where did you get that, and I ask you, where you got that recommendation from?
I called the man and asked for this information.
And how did you find out his name? Where did you get that from? Where did you get that from?
Man, contact.
Out of the blue, a man contacted you.
That's right, out of the blue, the man contacted me. And on 11 o'clock this morning, the man contacted me out of the blue. And do you wanna know why? Would you like to know why? Because the board of selectmen voted that there can be one contact, or information pertaining to the former power administrator. And I had that one contact, and the man contacted me out of the blue, believe it or don't. I don't care, the fact of the matter is, that's what happened, and divorce of the conversation that I had with him, I asked him for some information, he told me, and he said, you might not even wanna talk to me, 'cause I'm the guy that hired Jill Myers for everything. And you know, you seem like a real gentleman, you forwarded me this information, I'm sharing it with the board, it's friendly, I think the services are pretty professional, and that's it, it's, it's, there's the one and the shot of it. It's a very simple thing, the man contacted me, asked me a couple of questions, and I asked him. The.
Now I'd like to ask you a good question.
Go ahead.
Did Labor Council recommend this person?
No, I'm back to the same thing, the man called me for the, for the reason that I told you, because I, you being called, looking right at you, looked me in the eye, and you said, are you okay with this at that time? And I said, yeah, I'm, I'll do it, remember? Well, this is the kinda thing you get, when you say yes to it.
And, and where are we gonna get that $14,000 that you all?
I don't know where we would get the $14,000, I guess we'll take it out of that time.
What fund? What fund are you taking it out?
I don't know, I don't.
Then.
I don't have that one.
Let's call the lane up here, finance. Where are you gonna get that $14,000?
We haven't decided, we're gonna do it yet, we haven't decided, we're gonna discuss it. The board is like, right.
Well, he doesn't have the answer, and I'd like an answer. Where is the money coming from?
Oh, yeah.
And I'd like to ask you to call the lane up here, see if there's any money available.
Yes. You know something, there is, I, excuse me one second, sir, I appreciate it. I gotta ask, this is, this is a discussion before, before the end of the year, everybody tells.
Finish your last sentence, go ahead.
Um, his wife is a lobbyist, and very pro-developer, and she is behind a lot of how he votes. My next point, oh, guess, then we have Linda Bristman, who left the room, it's just as well, she doesn't really care what the residents think anyway, and she is.
Thank you very much.
That's okay, no, I'm gonna finish, because you interrupted me.
No, no.
I'm gonna finish and say that Mr. Delschad has never answered about whether his family ever received anything of value from the Hilton.
Darian.
His children had weddings there, we don't know what kinda discounts they got, whether they were comped, and he should've answered that or recused himself.
Why does she think she's entitled to that information?
You were very rude, and you interrupted me, and you should be ashamed of yourself. There are three people who voted for his brother.
Darian, thank you very much.
I had reported that to everyone and to you, and you are, again, don't come back.
No, 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 no.
Your time is up, it's my turn to talk, go sit down.
I don't turn it, okay.
My wife is not a lobbyist, she's never been a lobbyist. I had her fill out the lobbying forms when she took the job to do public outreach for the montage.
As you notice, Mr. Fenton is as sharp as a tack. Answered your question, he's not sick, he has a problem with voice, and that was very, very unkind for you to limish his, his health and his reputation. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you.
You know, I've been on this city council for eight years, just about, and I have always enjoyed a spirited discussion of give and take, and pro and con. But the level that has been expressed lately, the organized, um, opposition, the personal attacks are beyond anything that I have ever witnessed, and I think that there isn't a one of us up here tonight who can't say that they were ashamed and embarrassed, and how sad there was a camera watching the whole time, what a terrible reflection on our city. Um, cities everywhere are having trouble with bloggers. Bloggers who have turned council meetings into their own personal, um, uh, venue for expression and for exposure.
You know, this, this room, there are diverse opinions, there are no right answers, no wrong answers, we are, they are just different answers.
This isn't a ballgame, and we're not serving peanuts.
Booing and clapping hands is, is a form of free speech. You cannot shut them up, but discussions of intimidation of somebody's health and, and, and their position, and affecting them, and ruining somebody's bad name, even though it's free speech, is damn right, it's unkind, uncalled for. And they should be ashamed of themselves, Darian Bujo, you should be ashamed of yourself.
All right.
And it comes in as a red line drawing, as I sit down at this table. So from now on, I am going to say that in the future, let it be known, if you bring in something at the last minute, I will rip it up in front of you and not take it. Yet he said, at the, Councilmember Delschad said at the last meeting, we should disregard what they have to say and leave it to the professionals. Our law works.
I did not say that.
Uh, you better check the tape, that's what you did say.
Okay, you can read your speeches, that's written for you.
You know what, Jimmy, I don't interrupt you, don't interrupt me.
Please, everybody, this, hold on, this, this meeting is going to be.
Councilmember Delschad, they are our community and our constituency.
Thank you for criticizing.
You know, it's funny, you always have to get in the last word, don't you, Jimmy, even though I tell you.
All right, all right, let's, let's.
Okay, I'm gonna continue on.
You do a speech, but go on.
Jimmy, knock it off, I've heard enough from you.
All right.
That from, I knew somebody would try and throw cold water on me, but I didn't expect it that way. A red line version, and a new version, and a new development agreement, and something new sitting on my desk.
We heard of it.
Wait, wait.
Well, wait a minute, Jimmy, you know what, if you interrupt me.
Wait, 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 Jimmy, we are here all night. So just, please, all right, I'm just kidding.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, show me the whole thing. You can't ask to, everyone says we're repri, Jimmy, you know what, I don't talk while you're speaking, and I listen. You know what, during my installation, this group has been the rudest group I have ever dealt with.
Wait.
So knock it off.
Everybody, please, please, let's have no more talking, Nancy, finish your comments.
Well, I'd like to.
Thank you.
One of us has our own ability to comprehend the material. I am perfectly respectful of the fact, and I believe that Mrs. Prasney is having difficulty. But I don't want the public at large to think that the others are. I have worked with seven council members, and I have not yet found one that has had as much difficulty following along. You, I know you've said on many occasions, you never expected to win, but you did win, and you've had the job for over a year. This is what the job is, it may not please you, things move quickly, and you have to be able to keep up. And anyone who has difficulty understanding can get all the tutoring that they need if they make themselves available.
Okay.
Can I respond?
Um, do you have a lot to respond?
No.
I'm trying to stick to the topic.
No, I have no trouble understanding, and I read perfectly well, but when I get this much material
Okay.
in a short period of time, don't.
Okay, okay.
Now, wait a minute.
Come on, Nancy, please.
No, I'm sorry. When Linda says, no other person's ever been, had difficulty, well, maybe they haven't been honest, or they haven't read it, and that was previously propo, please don't talk while I'm speaking, I've had enough of that. No, you stop it over there.
Jesus, lady, get on with it.
I don't do it to you, I think you're terrific, but I wouldn't leave my life support system in your hands as to whether you're gonna pull the plug and let me live or die.
Mr. Alagen, would you be willing to accept that? Uh, we continue this until May 6th.
Do us all a favor.
Next Tuesday, so that we can keep this process absolutely clean and, and professional and complete, the way I think you would probably want us to. The yes or no? No. That's what I thought, okay.
Uh, I'd like to add, I'm, I'm glad that everybody knew how I was going to vote, because I didn't.
With that, uh, we will continue this meeting, uh, until, uh, Tuesday, May 6th at 7 o'clock.
Someone loves it, just get your cake. Thank you. I believe the word ridiculous has been used a ridiculous number of times, but I'm going to, I'm, it's not funny. Uh, but I'm gonna forego that, I'm gonna read, I'm. Let me know when you're finished. Oh, yeah? Please, are you done? Just, just keep talking.
Councilman Lessig, make your point. Don't engage the other council, please.
Thank you. Oh, really?
Councilman Lessig, please make your point, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you, I will. I'm gonna read from the very first page of our Fraser City Council Rules and Procedures Authority, 1.03, Council Authority Section 6.7 of the City Charter provides, "The council shall determine its own rules and order of business subject to the following provisions." We are a council. We are not a mayor and six members. We are equal voting members of this council. We're also policymakers. The city manager over here runs the city on a day-to-day basis, and he has needs, the need to be on that agenda. Now, what, what we're discussing here today, if there's four affirmative votes, we can change that. If there are not, it does not change. So remove the personal aspect. This is about getting the city business done. I have been watching this. I've watched over 20 years of council meetings. I've attended nearly 10 years of council meetings. In all of that time, in the last 10 years, it has been the most disorganized from time to time because things would get removed by the mayor that were requested by council members, and I'm not speaking directly about Mr. Nichols. I'm, Mr. Haggerty. I can't recall Mr. Germet doing it. I, I'm sure it has been done. But the point is, is that we make our rules here. And if you, and if there's four affirmative votes, we can change a rule. If there's not four affirmative votes, the rule stands. I would like this Council Rules, this book, to be updated to the current date because I know that there's some things in here that I can provide to the city attorney and the city manager regarding changes to the 4.04 format. It doesn't have the approval of the agenda on here. I did that, made that change. I suggested that change to Jan Wilson in 2006, and it's not in here. I would like to see this updated to the current rules, and I can provide them, the, the changes that we've made. So if you don't like the motion, just vote no. If you do like the vote, motion, vote yes. If you'd like to table the motion, make the motion to table it. But really, we can do this business without using words like ridiculous, unprofessional, and not singling anyone out. Let's just get it done. Back to Mayor Hemelberg. No, I would, Councilman Foster, let Mr. Lessig make his motion.
And again, I agree. And I'd like to suggest, because this was something obviously that some council members are very passionate about and have been passionate about it several times, that I don't understand why, being so passionate, you wouldn't reach out to other council members and, and share your thoughts on this. Here's the reasons why. Excuse me, Councilwoman Blanky? Were you not happy with my, my, um, what I just said? Because you just kinda rolled your eyes and...
Excuse me, Mayor, may I speak? Please don't tell me how to act.
I'm not asking how to act. I'm asking you, no, excuse me. I'm asking you if you have an issue.
Ladies, let's, let's just...
Don't tell me that.
I know Pat passed her on high.
I'm asking you if you have an issue with me.
If the floor is yours, Councilman Foster, Councilwoman Blanky.
Again, I'm asking, if this was such a passionate subject, I would have been more than willing to explore this. More than willing to explore this. Anybody can look to the ceiling. That's what I'll say.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foster. Mayor Pro Tim Carmody?
Yeah, I, I know for a fact that our residents, you know, and talking with some of them, are not happy with our agendas. Some of the comments are made like, "We're adding things," like we did, I think, the last meeting. It's councils to be heard, and people are turning off their TVs, and we're adding things to the agendas. Things have been taken off the agendas. I've heard it from administrations that some things aren't getting put on agendas because we don't wanna talk about agendas. So it's not working. And it didn't work before. And, and that'd belittle anybody, but I remember once I wanted to make a donation of money. And I was told, "No, you can't put it on the agenda." So either way, it's not working, so we have to figure out a way that's gonna work and and, and hopefully Wayne can, if he wants to weigh in on it. But whatever's gonna make the business go smooth, get the business done, that's what we need to do. But this back and forth and adding and changing and deleting, and Kelly's gotta send out three different versions, and it, it's just crazy. It's not working. So just my thoughts and the people's thoughts. I get more complaints about the agenda being crazy and all over the place, and adding and subtracting, and off the roly-poly, back on the roly-poly. It's something that needs to be done. We haven't had time to really sit down on it.
Back to Mayor Hemelberg.
You know, I agree. We should make another rule. Just change everything up. Because last time we went through this whole war and changed everything up for an electronics ordinance that we threw in, or a rule that we threw in, the people that brought it in have been the biggest violators of answering cell phones and walking out of this room during a meeting. That one person voted for the electronics ordinance, and she keeps breaking it. So let's put in some more pointless rules that will affect the mayor, Ms. Foster, and Mr. Hemelberg. So that, you know, or some can get their free to do what they wanna do.
Councilman Lessig, your opinion?
I'm not, I, I'm the one that brought up the electronic communication rule, and that phone never leaves that spot. Well, Mr. Nichols uses the phone. He, he sent me an email during a meeting.
Like, you sent me the one I sent you, because I don't recall that. I'm not saying I don't look at my phone because I have a son at home. I'll tell the people there, I do check it.
I'll forward that me...
I have no issues with it.
I, I... Do you wanna follow that rule explicitly?
I don't care. I don't even have a phone up in me.
Great. That's fantastic. But we're, we're dealing with 4.01 here.
You're not gonna follow it. Why'd you make it?
I follow that rule. That phone never leaves this spot.
No, we're, we're off topic.
No, we're not. No, no, we're talking about the rules here.
We're talking about a different thing.
Hey, he opened the door.
Okay, but we don't have to engage you. We continue to move forward. We're talking about moving forward in a professional manner. Let's do that.
That's fine, and I'd like to postpone this until the April meeting specifically.
Here we go, April again.
Can't we do another day? I'd like to indulge you. I have no problems with that. We can't cram everything in April. I'm making a motion. Look, don't shout at me. I don't know who you think you are, councilman, but you, I be recognized. I recognize you. I expect respect from you because I give it to you.
Councilman? Yeah, obviously, you have rules that govern decorum during the council meeting. I'd ask them, for the sake of the residents, everybody, take a deep breath and...
I'm fine. I just don't expect to be shouted at by someone who isn't getting their way. Sir, I was in the middle of making a motion, and you interrupted me. If you do not like my motion, please vote no.
Usually do.
Thank you. My motion is to postpone the discussion of Agenda Item 4.01 until April 2017, so that Mr. Carnegie can review this, as well as other council members, and we can address this with a piece of paper with a, with a potential rule, or no action at all.
I second.
Okay, good. We got a motion in a second. Now, since everybody's went back and forth with each other, shouted at people, and so, commonly, I'm gonna tell you this. To Councilwoman Foster's point, I get no communication or very rare communication from members of this council. Councilman Lessig has probably sent me less than a dozen emails. I'd like to ask... I'm speaking. I'll recognize you when I'm finished. Until then, you're not going to... This is a motion to postpone. You're not being recognized till I'm finished. This is a motion to postpone. I'm speaking this item. We are not talking about... We are going to talk about it, and you'll get you recognized when I'm finished. I gave you courtesy. I expect that courtesy. I'm yelling at you. I'm not yelling at you, sir.
The motion is a debatable motion to postpone. It's debated whether or not to postpone or to...
I'll hold it to my mayor's comments. I'll, I'll speak then. That's fine. Go ahead.
I second.
There's already a motion on the floor.
She seconded.
I'm just, I'm reseconding it.
Okay. Anybody from the public? Coming back. All in favor of postponing till April 17?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
When you have a question, mind it. You can use Kevin. Get out of here. Don't ever talk to me again.
You're part of the gang.
Don't ever talk to me again. I've never, I've never, my whole career, and I've been with real people to live for life, who are parous. They never had me, and nobody's ever had me. When I say that, when I go to court, I win because I only say the law. Don't tell me, bro. Councilman, who do you represent? The mayor of these councils. Then, you don't. Don't ever speak to me again. Never pretend to speak to me again.
I don't, I don't, you speak yet.
Well, you guys speak up, boy.
Okay. Excuse me?
Yeah.
That's a little...
Excuse you?
No, that's, that's very offensive. I'm a councilmember of the city. Don't, don't call me boy.
Act like it.
Because I'm trying to speak on ordinance?
In talking manner.
I really had the opportunity to speak.
Down to your...
Don't talk to me like that again. Don't, don't, don't call me boy.
Sounds like a friend.
You calling me boy is very disrespectful.
Man.
I'm not letting you.
You got about one minute to get to talking.
I mean, it's incredible.
It is.
I mean, the, the level of respect in this council. But you're gonna call councilmembers boy.
You're a prime member of that.
So this contract...
You're right, councilman, member, and I, I was a slip of the tongue over. All those in favor?
Mayor, I have not a chance to speak.
Certainly.
Thanks so much, David. A tense Jackson City Council meeting today. It's members voted on their leader.
Yeah, shouting match, starting with Councilman Kenny Stokes missed the vote for president. 16 WAPD's Catherine Cott is in the studio to tell us why Stokes says some members went back on their word. Catherine?
Scott and Stephanie, Councilman Kenny Stokes says he was ready for a change of leadership in the city council, but he says a family illness kept him from voicing his opinion today. Councilman Kenny Stokes walked into the city council meeting 10 minutes late, but it was 10 minutes after the council voted to keep Frank Bluntson as president and Charles Tillman as vice president. A heated exchange started when Stokes asked why he wasn't involved in the vote.
They followed the rules and the guidelines. That's all I'm saying. And, and everybody who was here at the meantime, they had the opportunity to vote. I'm gonna say this, item number 16, you don't take up item number 16 at 10 o'clock. Well, if you're here, Councilman, if you were here. Why did that citizen in the family? Now, I'm trying to deal with that.
Stokes wanted to vote again, but Bluntson said they couldn't because Councilwoman Margaret Barrett-Simon had already left the meeting.
Same time that councilmen need to have a behind here. It's council meeting time. Now, you can let them go everywhere else, and they can do everything else, but they don't have to be at the council meeting. They can go to a special meeting. They can go to any kind of meeting, but they don't stay for council meeting. And the right councilmembers know that. And you as president need to set the rules and tell them they need to stay here at council meeting like everybody else.
Stokes claims he and other councilmembers had a prior agreement on who they would vote for. He says opponents used his tardiness to throw a wrench in their plan.
And all of a sudden, you're gonna do Politic 101. The backdoor method, gonna hear them bring the vote up before I get here.
Hey, buddy, get there early.
This argument. And Kenny Stokes told me he wanted to vote for Councilman Chokwe Lamanga as president. He also says he wants the same council to rotate the president's seat every year. Scott?
All right.
Borough Call, win. Okay. Second on the motion? No second?
Does everybody understand what it is?
I understand fully, Paula.
What is it?
Dan, great. What is it?
What is it?
It doesn't, it doesn't warrant any question or any motion, no discussion on it.
It's a routine ministerial thing. It has to do with information technology. Okay. No second. All right. No problem.
I have a point of order, Mr. President.
Oh, you have number nine now? Mr. President, you have number nine. You have to get through the motion.
Go ahead, point of order.
Okay. In order to move further forward, I think we need to start cutting. And, and since we have container engineering, and we can bring the police officers standing here, if somebody's trash is thrown too high, I move to make a motion to eliminate the code enforcement job.
Can we, Mr. Lessig, manage and we finish this?
Question on motion, is that, that would be appropriate under new business?
Yeah.
We are on the, we are on the agenda.
We are on the business.
Let's get these come first.
I'm, I second number nine. Mr. President, you're on number nine. You need a motion to... That's not what a point of order is.
How about, how about we finish everything, then we can...
Right. We'll come back to you.
But you can make a motion at any time.
Okay. I just, I do a missing claim.
There was seconds on the table. The motion wasn't taken off. It was second on the table.
Finish these and then we'll come back to it.
There's a motion on the table, and it was second.
Well, we're gonna finish these and come back.
There was a motion on the table.
It's not recognized because you're going in order of the agenda. So, Mr. President, the next order on the agenda is a motion to approve the expense of the conference registration fee for councilpersons to net pray Martha Van Halken and Patricia Williams. That's the item on the agenda. Got to follow the agenda.
We're gonna defer this motion until they take care of the other motions.
Thank you.
Back to it.
Thank you.
On the floor, we just gotta get to the floor.
Thank you.
Make a motion. That's what I'm gonna say, Paul.
All right, number nine, a motion to approve the expense of the conference registration fee for councilpersons to net pray Martha Van Halken and Patricia Williams to attend the annual conference for the Pennsylvania State Boroughs Association that will be held in Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
I make the motion. I second the motion, but I'll never go in my...
Questions on the motion?
Yes, I do. Is there no other councilperson that is attending this conference?
No.
Well, I, I can't speak for nobody else. But I can't go. It's four days. I, I mean, if it was a weekend, I might be able to go, but I can't go like Sunday to Wednesday because of my medical condition. I can't speak for the rest of the week.
You want a roll call, boo, for this?
Whatever. I don't know.
Any other questions? Okay.
Just go by voice, bro.
Good. Roll call.
Voice, but... All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, thank you. All right, number 10. Can we get a motion to approve the March bill list?
I second that.
Second it? Okay, questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I have a problem with the bill list. It seems that Ms. Brown is giving us a list every month of things that are on the same list as last month. She's not telling us what we're paying. I'd rather have this. One sheet says bills are paid, one sheet saying bills still have standards. This is not helping me at all. I have no idea where I'm voting on. This is the same thing I said last month. I don't know what we're paying. I don't know what we're paying.
Can you clarify that, Mrs. Brunt?
Yes, I can, if you would like me to read it line by line. Leave, how are your rental, $186? How can you be more clarified than this? You never provided a bill list for years. You get one every month. Tell you exactly what it is.
She just wants, she just wants different bills on her every month.
There, there is different bills on there every month. Every month, these are the bills for March because we have the same bill month and month.
Some bills we get.
This is ridiculous.
I make the motion that we table the bill.
This is crazy.
I make the motion.
Crazy.
Table, you have a question, please.
Crazy.
Wait a minute. Go ahead, finish the question.
So, if you're saying, this is a March bill list. You're saying we're going to pay $96,000...